All right, welcome to the zoning board of appeals. Um, please silence all cell phones and note that this meeting is being taped by FCTV. If there's any private party recording this hearings, please step up to the podium to request permission. I'll introduce the board and staff. On the far right, our one-legged member is Mark Fineran. To his left is Scott Peterson. To my right is Frank Duffy, the clerk. My name's Suzanne Murphy, the chair. To my left is James Moss, vice chair. And then we have Nick Haney and our office assistant, Ashley DeMello. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws and reviewing and voting on any application. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public and to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to closing the hearing process and reaching a decision. Number one, to begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. Two, the applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, but time may be extended by a vote of the board. Three, the board will then question the applicant. Four, the public will be invited to comment. Comment should be limited to two minutes each and be strictly related to the proposal. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair and should come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, speak into the mic, and it will not amplify your voice and record audio for the FCTV viewers. And before we start the hearing, we have a time at the beginning where if anyone has a public comment on anything that's not on our agenda, you're welcome to come up and have a comment. Anybody dare? Okay, we'll move on. So tonight we have 031-25 Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod, 805 Gifford Street Extension. And I have to read something because we are in safe harbor. I move that the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals has the grounds to declare that a denial or approval with conditions of this application is consistent with local needs as denied, defined in GL 40B, Section 20 through 23, and 760 CMR 56.031A and 3A because of the town's subsidized housing inventory exceeds 10% and further under 760 CMR 56031B4 and municipal compliance with its approved HPP, Housing Production Plan, and to provide the requisite 15-day written notice following tonight's hearing to the applicant and to the executive order of housing in livable communities. So Frank, you can open up and do, um...
This is the, this is the public notice. Application 3125 Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod has applied to the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals for a comprehensive permit pursuant to Chapter 40B of the general laws to construct four single-family dwellings, all units to be affordable. The subject property is a 805 Gifford Street Extension, and according to the Falmouth Neighborhood Directory, it is in Hatchville. Some relevant facts. The applicant is Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod. It's a nonprofit organization. There will be five lots, one which will be a shared septic system, the four residential single-family dwelling lots. The property is 805 Gifford Street Extension. It's currently being used for a Habitat for Humanity restore. The subject property we're talking about is out behind it. There's one commercial building on the property. The lot is 135,758 square feet, which equals 4.05 acres. The existing building on the site is 9,570 square feet, and the proposal is to construct four three-bedroom homes between 1,256 square feet and 1,276 square feet. There is a site approval letter from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities dated December 18th, 2024. Of the four units, all four will be affordable. There are currently no nonconformities noted on the site. The zoning district is AGA. There are no noted wetlands on the site. The Falmouth Conservation Commission does not have jurisdiction. It's not in the flood hazard zone, but it is in a water resource protection district. The site does not qualify as prime agricultural land under Massachusetts Executive Order despite the fact that it's AG, or agriculturally zoned. The total lot coverage by structure is 11.78%. Structure paving and parking is 27.17%, but this lot is going to be broken up, so the figures will be different when it's finally finished. We have some referrals. I'll just give you a rundown of them without reading the whole referral. The planning board, on the 13th of May, 2025, advised us that this project aligns with the local comprehensive plan policy for greater residential density where appropriate. They say that it's a well-designed project with appropriate landscape buffers. There is no apparent conflict with the commercial use of the property out front. They've determined there's adequate drainage and that the proposed houses are sized appropriate for the lot. They've also asked that the applicant consider zero step entrances instead of the steps, and they have a question about solar panels. Engineering has noted that the property is in a water resource protection district. Gifford Street Extension is a public way at this location. They've also advised us that there will be no municipal trash or recycling collection and no snow plowing on this site. The storm, they indicated they may need some additional information to determine stormwater management calculations. They've advised us to consider soil erosion, soil erosion and sediment control as a condition, and also advise us not to waive the requirement for monuments at lot corners. The Board of Health has advised us that their pending Board of Health regulations, which will require IA septic systems, and the applicant should plan for an IA septic system in project design. The housing coordinator had advised us that the project aligns with the town's current housing production plan. Water Department advises that a new service will be necessary and a water main extension service agreement will be necessary, and we today got through the building department, noticed that a complaint has been filed by Cynthia Rose alleging that there is an illegal dump on the site.
I'm going to read in just one more thing, the, um, the health referral that we have from the Board of Health. This property is located outside of the MASTEP nitrogen-sensitive area and will not be part of the watershed planning. However, there is a pending Board of Health regulation that will require IA technology for nitrogen removal, removal for new construction. That developing regulation does include other potential nitrogen-sensitive areas beyond what MASTEP has mapped. This location could become a site nitrogen-sensitive by Falmouth regulations, but not MASTEP. If the regulation eventually does include this property and the building permit is applied for after the effective date of the regulation, then an IA is required. I suggest that the applicant plan for an IA in their design and follow closely with the Board of Health. That's all, I just wanted to say that. You can take it away now, sir.
Thank you very much. Good evening, members of the board. Mr. DeMello, my name is Warren Brody. I'm an attorney for Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod. I'm also a member of its board, and I'm also a Falmouth resident for the last 10 years. With me tonight, I guess it is tonight even though it's so light out, Noreen Brown, who is Habitat's Director of Land Acquisition and Permitting. Next to her is Mr. Kurt Raiber of Catalyst Architecture. He was the architect for the project. And here is Mr. Robert Reedy of JM O'Reilly and Associates, the engineer for the project. Mr. Burke is here also. He is the principal of Capital Realty and Development Corporation, who is the present owner of the project site. So Habitat for Humanity proposes to build four new affordable homes on 40,780 square feet of land located off Gifford Street Extension in Falmouth. The permitting sought is via Mass General Laws, Chapter 40B. The subsidizing agency is the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities under its local initiative program. The property, as I said, is owned by Capital Realty and Development Corporation of West Barnstable. A purchase and sale agreement for a portion of the four-acre parcel was executed by Habitat and CRDC in 2023, which gives Habitat site control for the purpose of developing these houses and also standing to be here before you. An amendment to the agreement was executed in May of 2024, which actually added approximately 3,000 square feet of land to the parcel to be acquired. That purchase and sale agreement and the amendment are before you in attachment number two. And I trust that everyone has a copy of the application?
No.
Okay. So we are seeking permission through what we call the friendly 40B process with the encouragement and cooperation of the town. What we're proposing is to divide the 800 Gifford Street into six parcels, and the, this is sheet three of six, showing the proposed site plan. Parcel one is the large parcel containing what is still the restore, Habitat Restore. Parcel number two, lot number two, is a shared lot which will contain both drainage structures and a shared Title V septic system. Lots three, four, five, and six will each contain a three-bedroom residence. The residential subdivision will be accessed from Gifford Street Extension via the current restore parking lot entrance. A new exit will be built across the ever-source easement area to ease vehicular flow and also give the residents their own method of egress. We've been through a fair amount of process already, starting even before, in 2023, we discussed the project concept with Falmouth Town Planner, Mr. Cornoch, Kimberly Fish, the housing coordinator, and the ZBA Administrator, Noreen Stockman. We conducted a site visit with Ms. Fish in 2023 and appeared at an informal meeting of town department heads to review the project. In 2012, December of 2023, we appeared before the Falmouth Affordable Housing Committee, and we appeared there again in March of 2024, and there was a unanimous vote at that time to write a letter of support and to sign our LIP application to be sent to Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. In March of 2024, we also appeared before the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund Working Group and discussed the project and our future funding request. And then in June of 2024, we appeared at the LIP Review Committee and the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund meetings. Our applications were unanimously recommended to the town manager by the LIP Review Committee and by the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, where we were seeking $500,000 in both acquisition and early construction funding. The CPC approved the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund project funding and made their recommendation of the project to the Select Board in July of 2024. In that same month, the Select Board unanimously approved CPC trust funding and agreed to sign the project's LIP application. The LIP application was submitted to EOHLC in August of 2024, and we received our project eligibility letter from them in December of 2024. And in the meantime, we sent out notice to all the neighbors within, all the butters within 300 feet of the project, and we had a public meeting by Zoom and then again in person. There were zero attendees at the Zoom meeting and one attendee at the in-person meeting held at the restore. So that's the process that we've been through. I think it's been helpful at every stage in the process. There have been tweaks in our design to accommodate various concerns. The site itself is, as noted, it's an agricultural A, AGA zoning. It's proximate to public utilities, excepting sewer. The proposed home sites sit behind the occupied commercial building, which Habitat is leasing from Mr. Burke's firm for its restore, which has been a very successful development for us. The commercial building is subject to a Falmouth Planning Board decision in, in 2017. If you're interested in that, you'll find it in attachment number four. The vacant rear portion of the lot is subject to some topographical variation, and it's covered with mixed tree growth, scrub oaks, evergreens, native shrubs, et cetera. Butters to the property include at the southern boundary, the Miskowski landscaping, excuse me, a 3.7-acre commercial residential site owned or used by Miskowski Landscaping at 393 Brick Hill Road. To the north, there is a town-owned, permanently encumbered, open space recreational lot of some 13 acres. To the east, a two-acre residential parcel at 365 Brick Hill Road, and at the southerly tip of the subject parcel, a one-acre residential parcel at 387 Brick Hill Road. In our plan, following the subdivision, the commercial building will be situated on its own lot, as I said, that lot number one, and the rear of the parcel will be that 40,780 square feet will be divided into the five lots, two being the shared lot for utilities and septic, and four lots, all somewhat less than two tenths of an acre. Each one will have a three-bedroom home, and each one will have private parking and be serviced by the shared septic system. And that septic system is on a 9,564 square foot, that lot number two, which has, as I said, the Title V septic and drainage and a portion of the shared access driveway. The common areas of the development will be controlled by a homeowners association, which will control the common lot, the driveway, and the shared resources. As for the homes to be built, lots three, four, and five will contain two-story capes, and lot six will contain a single-story ranch. I believe you have plans of all of these structures. The ranch is the easiest one to adapt for accessibility as all the living is on the same floor. We select our families before we build, so if we select a, or a family is selected that has a person with a disability, we can alter our construction plans to accommodate that disability. The three-bedroom capes have two full bathrooms, and the three-bedroom ranch has one and a half bathrooms. All of the homes have a full basement, and the basement is where the laundry facilities will be for each of the homes, and all of the homes meet or exceed the LIP standards in terms of square footage and other features. We're hoping, as funding and site conditions allow, that each of the homes will include a solar facility. We are very proud of our homes because we meet or exceed LEED, that's the L-E-E-D standards, although we do not seek certification of LEED, platinum, gold, silver, whatever, just for cost reasons. But our homes have very high R-value for insulation, which is possible given that we use two-by-six-inch construction, and the homes are inherently efficient and well-built and are modest in size, so there are fewer materials and less fuel needed to heat. We use U-value windows and Energy Star appliances. We also use highly efficient air source heat pumps, which are an aid to indoor air quality. There are no fossil fuels burned on these, burned in these premises. We use low or no VOC products, and Habitat Homes consistently score low HERS ratings, and in 2022, Habitat received, our Habitat affiliate, received an award, but we were recognized by ResNet, a rating organization, as having the lowest HERS scores, that's a minus 15 score, among all of the thousand-plus Habitat for Humanity affiliates in the United States. So we're, we're quite proud of that. We build good homes, and we continue to upgrade our homes as new products and innovations become available. We have engaged the services of Miskowski Landscaping, our butter for the project. Miskowski will provide grading, hardscapes, and site-wide planting design. If you are curious, that attachment four and the set of drawings there, sheet five, has a landscaping plan. Maybe I can find that. I'll find it at some point. The plantings will, will include screening plantings, which will be a buffer between the developed areas and, and give some privacy to the houses. We also provide shallow-rooted landscape plantings as appropriate on the lot of the shared residential systems. Mr. Miskowski will coordinate these site-wide plantings with the efforts of the Cape Cod-based permaculture organization, Resilient Roots, to incorporate sustainable edible and wildlife plants into the individual homebuyer lot plan. While Habitat controls the selection of the site-wide plantings, our families have some say the selection of the initial plantings around their homes. Some homebuyers choose only native wildlife-friendly plantings, others incorporate dwarf fruit trees and shrubs bearing edible fruits. Turning now to the community, well, our model, if you've heard about it, is called sweat equity. Selected households, each adult is required to provide 250 hours of sweat equity, this being sort of in lieu of a down payment. 250 hours for each adult. So it could, if there's two adults, it'd be 500 hours. A family can work on their own home or on another Habitat build or at other Habitat-related activities, for instance, the restore, some could work. Most people end up working on their own homes. But what that does, it provides homebuyer education. People understand how their homes are put together. We also provide homebuyer education and counseling, and we work with our families through the mortgage and closing process, and the first full year of home ownership, we provide family partners who consult with the homeowners on a regular basis. So our process promotes home ownership and homeowners who become educated in building and maintenance. It also fosters a sense of community and friendship. Many of our homebuyers and their family partners become long-term friends through the process. And if you're familiar with the Willett Way development of a couple of years ago, we have 10 families there that have very close relationships. We also partner with our home-build communities seeking donations of materials, professional services, and labor. We strive to make our homes welcome in the neighborhood and to be good neighbors. We work to create a collaborative spirit where the whole community can be actively involved in helping to address what is an affordable housing crisis, both in Falmouth and in Cape Cod generally. As the Falmouth homes will be affordable in perpetuity, Habitat offers 100% of the project as affordable, not simply the 25% required by law, as providing affordable housing is what we do. That's our mission. Affordability will be protected by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Community Regulatory Agreement and a deed rider, and all of the homes will count on Falmouth subsidized housing inventory. We are proposing that two of the homes be sold as affordable to very low-income households, that is, households earning at or below 60% of the area median income. Two of the homes will be sold to those at or below 80% of area median income. We estimate right now the home prices will be, for the 60%, will be around $194,000, and for the 80%, approximately $262,000. The final home price will be determined using HUD median incomes as determined at the time of the homebuyer applications, and will be approved by the Executive Office of Housing prior to opening the lottery. Habitat will work with the town and the Executive Office of Housing to request that two of the four homes be awarded a local preference, that is, a preference for applicants who live in the town, work in the town, are employed by the town, or with children enrolled in the town's schools. Local preference guidelines currently allow for a maximum of 70% of a project's units. Fortunately, that is rounded down, so we're talking about two of the four units having a local preference. With our quality, single-family homes priced affordably, Habitat for Humanity creates home ownership opportunities for families at income levels not served by other affordability programs. We are an experienced developer, having built over 180 affordable Cape Cod homes since our founding as an affiliate of Habitat for Humanity International in 1988. Habitat partners with families in need of an affordable home to build one of their own, fostering stability, self-reliance, and a strong sense of community. And with that, I open the meeting to questions, and I will hopefully be able to direct your questions to people who are more skilled at answering them than perhaps I am. And ultimately, the request is for the approval of the application and the issuance of a comprehensive permit under Master and Under Laws, Chapter 40B, for the development as proposed. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Want to start off, Tom, that end?
Uh, yeah, why not? I'm very familiar with the site. Walk through Habitat or, yeah, once a week, the restore, like, at least once a week, because I'm a famous chief state, tighter than the wallpaper on the walls. So as I say, I'm familiar with it, and, I mean, Habitat obviously does some good work, but the one thing that jumps out at me here is you're sharing the driveway going in, and, you know, this is all about affordability and saving money. It seems to me that this proposed driveway that you have here, which is going to go down over the power line easement, which is no easy task, how is that not just an excess and a waste when they're already sharing the driveway going in anyway?
It's a good question. I think it's a reasonable criticism. I think the idea was to provide a sense of some amount of ownership of a, you know, particular egress from the, from the site.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but what if you're sharing the driveway going in? It just seems to be, to be honest with you, just a waste in my assessment. And that's all. Other than that, I mean, everybody knows they do a good thing and do good work. I certainly have no problem with any of this thus far anyhow.
Thank you.
A great project, great thing for the town, so I appreciate everybody's efforts. As the chair read in at the opening, we have the Health Department discussing the fact of an IA system, and again, this is the difficulty that we're in as a town. We want affordable housing. We want to keep those prices down as much as possible, but we also have a massive expenditure on the other hand because of the soaring, or IAs that have to take place. In the documents here, I see that you're not doing an IA, yet we have a referral from the Health Department saying that you should certainly be pricing it in. So I was wondering, could you give us some additional color on what you're proposing? So I was wondering, could you give us some additional color on what you're proposing?
When we started with the process, we went to the Board of Health and told that we could use a Title V, shared Title V septic system for this development, and we planned accordingly. There is a chance that by the time building, a building permit might be issued, that the scenario might have changed, the regulations will have changed. And if we have to, we'll deal with it then. That's our plan. I mean, we're based upon what the Board of Health said, we've gone forward with a shared Title V system if we have to change that. There is ample room on Lot Two to provide an IA system. We've at least determined that.
Yeah, no, it looks to be like there's going to probably be a high probability, so I just want to make sure that your group is fully understanding that there is going to be a high probability of that additional expenditure. Hopefully, you can make that work, or go back to the town and ask for some more money, but...
Well, it will change our pro forma.
Exactly.
Significantly. We're not, I would say, in the neighborhood of, what, twenty, thirty thousand dollars per unit, something like that.
Other than that, again, I echo Mark's comments. Appreciate everybody's work. It's well-needed, and looks like you're doing a very nice job on the design. So thank you.
Frank?
I too am favorably disposed to this project. It looks like it's pretty well put together, and it certainly is needed. Couple of questions. In your application, you said that this project does not fall in the Coastal Pond Overlay District, but yet in the 2017 Planning Board Site Plan Review for the Restore, it says it is in the Coastal Pond Overlay District. So what is it?
I'm not absolutely certain, but there's a line somewhere.
Well, do we know where it is?
When we were developing, when the Restore building was being built, that, that is in the Coastal Pond Overlay District.
That's what the Planning Board Site Plan Review says, but the proximity is so close, I'm wondering why you answered in the application that it's not. That's just, I'm just, it's a discrepancy. Sort it out in my mind.
Clearly, we're in a Water Resource Protection District.
Yes, we know that.
We know that. But, and I'm not sure what the implications of being in the...
Well, we have a Coastal Pond Overlay District section of the bylaw, and I know we have to consider it, that's all. You heard me read a referral from the Board of, from the Building Department, that someone had filed a letter complaining that there's a dump on this property. Do you have any information on that?
Do I? No.
Well, does any, do your people have any?
Do you have any dump on the property?
Well, I mean, I can speak to the Eversource issue, which I believe is...
Come up to the microphone.
Yep. Why don't you come right up to the board?
So, again, Bob Reedy, engineer with J. M. O'Reilly and Associates. I've had extensive conversations with Eversource regarding this project. And to give you a little bit of background, basically, we reached out to Eversource when we got involved and said, hey, we're, you know, we're going to be bringing in utilities across the easement, we're looking at bringing in a secondary driveway across the easement. We'd like to start the process of, you know, getting a permit approval for, for this new work within the easement. We know it takes a while with Eversource, so we're looking to get started as soon as we can. The response that we eventually got back was that the existing development did not properly get the permitting process done when it was permitted and developed in 2017. So we kind of are working backwards since then. Essentially, Eversource has expressed a willingness to work with us, they have not expressed any issues with our proposed application, and it's stated multiple times that they, they don't want to get in the way of the process and that they support what Habitat's doing. But essentially, due to their processes, they need the existing permit to be approved after the fact, in concert with the proposed permit to also be approved. So, related to that, we're working through issues with Eversource. They've asked us for existing conditions plans so they can kind of assess what's there and work towards an after-the-fact permit approval for, for essentially what, what was done within the easement so far. One of the things that was brought up was along the edge, along the northern side, there's some, I guess, landscape debris up there, that it's in question as to how that got there and whether someone dumped that there, or if that was already there before this development happened. That hasn't been determined yet, but Eversource, that's essentially what Eversource is, is looking to have rectified as part of this project, is that, you know, any sort of outstanding issues that, that happened as a result of that construction would need to get fixed as a result of our, our new work here. So my understanding is that we're moving forward with, with Eversource, and eventually we'll, we'll get an answer as to what we need to do to move forward.
But Eversource doesn't own that land, they just have an easement over it, right?
Correct.
So it's not their problem, is it?
We, we do have to get a permit for the work.
What work are you talking about?
So, you know, when this was a vacant lot, you know, back in 2016, 2017, and the Habitat Restore was getting built with the initial driveway, a permit should have been requested at that time with Eversource for the initial development. That was what the missing piece was. So we're working to get that permit now, in addition to our new permit.
Well, when I did my site visit out there, I saw a lot of debris out in the back. Now, I don't know where it was in terms of property lines, but it certainly looks to me like there's some cleanup that's necessary before you get going out there.
And, you know, my understanding is that once we get the answer as to what Eversource wants us to do, we'll move forward accordingly. But we have to get that permit from them first.
I wonder what Eversource has to do with it. I mean, don't you want to do it?
I, I'm not sure that we're necessarily in a position that we should be getting in there before we come to an agreement with Eversource as to what should be done. And in fact, with my correspondence with them, that's directly what they've asked us to do, is to move forward with the process so that they can tell us what mitigation they might want in the area. Whether they have the rights to do that is still up in question, but we are working through the process with Eversource to make sure we can resolve this.
Well, perhaps if you come back another day, you can have more information on this. It's kind of still not settled in my mind.
Well, to be honest with you, I don't think that we'll able, we'll be able to get our proposed permit from Eversource until after we've gotten all of our local board approvals. Typically, they wait and want to see that we've gotten all local approvals. Again, we're, we're moving forward with them. Typically, their processes take a long time. They typically ask for five to six months for a permit review process. They've indicated some willingness to try to move things along, but so far, things have moved pretty slowly. You know, initially, I think there was some appetite to try to get an answer from Eversource, but things have just moved so slowly that we wanted to move forward with the application now, understanding that we can't move forward with construction until we've got the permitting situation squared away.
I think, the, the legal dump is in a different section. Are we talking about the letter that was received?
We're talking about the letter, but I just want some clarification.
I believe that's on the southern side, where the landscaper meets...
But even if it's, if it's nearby, we don't, I don't want people living next to a dump.
Well, isn't this some...
And to be clear, if I could point out, the area in question is effectively off the map. It's up north of where the proposed secondary driveway would be, within the Eversource easement. It's nowhere near the proposed housing area. And in fact, it wasn't even with our initial topography area, because it was so far out of the developed area.
Now...
Something that Eversource brought to us as part of it.
Is this dump?
This one?
Or what of it? Is it, is it not similar to what happens all over town, where people access the right-of-way and do their landscape material dumping? I mean, the, it happens a lot of places in town. Is this the same kind of thing? People are driving down the power lines and dumping their...
All I can say is, our assumption is, it should be something we can easily take care of as part of the construction. You know, in terms of why Eversource has brought this issue to the forefront and why they want us to mitigate it, we're confident it is. It's really just some debris that...
Eversource didn't bring this up. We have an abutter bringing it up.
Yeah. We, we, Eversource brought it to our attention, the dump, that's how we...
You got to come up, you got to come up.
Wait, wait, time, you get, come on up. Just come up to the mic, please, and introduce yourself again, please. Thank you.
My name is Robert Burke, and I'm the property owner. I think the illegal dump they're talking about, in good faith, Habitat's had a metal pile out back, and they take that in from people, and then they sell it at a salvage yard. So I think that's the item that the abutter potentially is talking about that is the closest to her property. I wanted, just if you don't mind, make some clarification regarding this Eversource situation. Historically, going back in 2017, when we were originally building that building, I, as the property owner, filed the application with Eversource, a seven-page application. I submitted a check to them for one thousand dollars, which they cashed. They then came out and moved the guy wires from the existing pole that is in the easement from one direction to the other direction to create the driveway we now have. Subsequently, when the building was finally constructed, they powered up the building. Now, we never heard from them again. I thought the process was complete, since I sent the application in, they cashed my check. Now, we fast-forward seven years later, all of a sudden, when Habitat submits the proposal to do the four houses and create this new driveway, someone at Eversource suggests that, oh, wait a minute, you never got the permit for the first time. Well, timeout here, you took my application, you cashed my check, you came out and moved guy wires, you came out and powered up the building, no one else ever said a word about any additional permit that potentially I need to receive. So in all fairness to me, Eversource has not acted in good faith here. They then subsequently claimed that I dumped a hundred yards of fill down to that southern side, which I did not. I have photographic evidence, prior to when I purchased the property, that that fill was already there. I've spoken to a zoning attorney who has advised me that Eversource is out of their rights to request that anything be removed. Eversource went to the Building Department and claimed I had dumped it, or someone dumped fill there. The Commissioner, Mr. Street, went down there, looked at it, looked at GIS maps, and said, no, he sees no violation, and sent a letter back to Eversource to that effect. So that's where we stand today, and I just, so everyone can, everyone can be brought up to speed as to exactly what's going on with this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And obviously, one final comment. Once these houses are constructed, I'm sure Habitat will not be having a metal pile there. And they take in the metal, someone picks it up, brings it to Bedford or one of the salvage yards, and then donates that money back to Eversource. So I think that's the quote-unquote illegal dump that's going on right now.
So we can just condition something like that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is very helpful, thank you.
Maybe I can just add one comment, and that is, if you look at the purchase and sale agreement, Habitat's not obligated to take title until all the approvals are in hand, which would include the Eversource, whatever's needed from Eversource. So this thing will not go forward without satisfying Eversource.
Go ahead, Mark.
Now, if you were to remove that proposed driveway and just exit with a shared use like you are, intend to, would that eliminate Eversource for the equation and make this easier and smoother, and also free up that money, potentially, for the D-Night systems, and make everything cheaper for everybody, which is Habitat's, what they endeavor to do in the first place?
Unfortunately, we're going to need to bring electricity onto the site through that easement. So we will need Eversource approval.
Okay, but I still question the driveway, that's all. Seems extra to me.
Been clear about that, but we, we still need Eversource's approval to do what we need to do with the electrical service.
Go ahead.
Could I have the engineer come back up for one question? Just from a testimony perspective, which way is the groundwater migration under, under the parcels? Is it towards, potentially towards Long Pond?
Yes, I believe so, yeah. I, I can confirm that for you. I don't have it in front of me.
If you would, thank you.
Will you all sit here, Frank?
No, I have another question. Hi, Kurt Raiber, architect, also a Falmouth resident. While that discussion was going on, I had the chance to go online and check the Coastal Pond Overlay map. And the parcel, and in fact, all of the abutters to this parcel are outside of the Coastal Pond Overlay. I'm sure staff can confirm that.
What about the site?
The site is, is not in the overlay.
It's not.
It is not, nor are the abutters.
So we were, we've been advised by the DPW that they're not going to provide snow plowing, trash pickup, or recycling. How are you going to handle it?
We'll have to handle it. Typically, a homeowners association would be charged with arranging those things.
Is it going to be individual pickup, well, if you, if you don't, at each house, or are you going to do a dumpster for the project?
I, I don't think that's been decided. But I'll tell you, our homeowners associations are professionally managed. We don't put that on the homeowners. We hire professionals to do it. I assume they will, would be able to handle it.
Okay, well, that's, that's important, because you've got a small homeowners association of four members, which is kind of a difficult, okay, thank you. Well, when you get information on that, if you can bring it to us, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm going to go next. Is mail going to be normal, mail too? And like Amazon and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, we'll be working with the engineer regarding mail. And we haven't been told yet whether we have to do a panel box or a...
So we'll see that eventually at some point. And then I have another question, that when, I saw the LIP application when you went before the selectmen, and you indicated this is going to be solar. I see nothing on the plans.
It's in the pro forma, and there is a note saying we haven't finalized it.
You did, you did tell the selectmen you were going to solar it.
Yeah, and it is in our pro forma.
Okay. Are we going to see those on the plans?
Good trade.
Hello again, Kurt Raiber, architect for Habitat. We've drawn over forty of these homes, and the current building code requires that we provide a raceway or a pathway for solar compatibility. And in most of the cases, Habitat does raise enough funds to put solar on the homes, but the, the current code requires that we provide a pathway from the electric panel to the roof for it. So that is certainly part of the building code process. And as Warren mentioned, we're hopeful that funding will allow for the solar. We can show the solar area on the roof plan of each home, if that's a requirement.
It's on there.
I just saw you say it to the selectmen, so that's why I asked. And then one other architectural thing, could I ask for you, as a, as a mom? Can you put a little roof over those side doors, so that when you're carrying in and the kids are running in and you got your groceries, you know what I mean, the little cover on top of the door? I know that they're probably not real expensive, but there's only four you would have to do, not the front door, but the side door, like? I just think people would utilize that. We had another project here in town where the builder did agree to put them on, so that's why I'm asking.
Okay.
And it looks aesthetically nice, too, actually.
I'm sure we could design a nice little canopy.
Yeah, just, you know what I mean, when the, because the driveways are right near that side door.
Right.
Well, a couple of them are.
Bob Riley, the director of construction for Habitat, wasn't able to be here tight, but I would...
Just put a bug in someone's ear.
I would anticipate he would say that budget is super, super thin and tight.
I mean, you could have the homeowner do it, but I figure when you're there with all this wood, you've got, one, one unit has a porch, so you're going to have a lot of, you know, extra, there's going to be wood around. I don't think they're that expensive, I, I just think it's, it would be a productive thing to do.
They have bolt-on aluminum ones that are extremely cheap.
Yeah, yeah. Just, just put a bug in someone's ear for me.
All right, I'll talk to Riley tomorrow.
Thank you. Jim? I'm all set for now. Jim?
Majority of my questions have already been answered. First off, just thank you to Habitat. You folks do yeoman's work. This is a very nice project. It's obviously going to be approvable. Thank you for addressing the issue about laundry hookups. I'll just reiterate the concern that the board has wrestled with regarding nitrogen and Title V and the Board of Health. Not looking to add increased cost to this project, but I would hate to break ground, have something go in, and then very shortly after you've provided housing to moderate and low-income people, to suddenly be saddled with a thirty-thousand-dollar betterment or requirement. So if you can possibly think about reworking the pro forma, just to doing it now, or if you can't, you can't, but please consider. I did have one question about the waivers. Why are you requesting a waiver about... I did have one question about the waivers. Why are you requesting a waiver about lot corner monuments? We got a real pushback about that one, and I generally prefer to know where property lines are, especially since this is going to be conveyed.
Yeah, I think we heard the pushback, and we'll accept we'll do what needs to be done.
It's not going to push you out of budget by doing this?
Just to add a little clarification on that, there are 15 proposed lot corners, and we are proposing monumentation at 12 of the 15 corners. Two of the three that were not are right in the center of that shared driveway that will be shared by lots three, four, and five. It's really not a property line that's going to be meaningful to anyone. It's going to be a shared parking area between three of the four lots. And the other one is just at the angle point up at the, I guess we have the existing condition plan on. But effectively, we do have almost all of the corners on there. We are only asking for the waiver specifically for those two that are right within the center of the driveway there. If the board would be willing to condition it as just those only two would be allowed a waiver, and we'd have to put it at every other corner.
That's something I can certainly get behind. Thank you for clarifying. Thank you for including sheds. It's something that we've consistently wrestled with on 40Bs where people come in, we're looking for absolute maximum lot coverage, and we're saying, well, okay, you're putting these on a slab. These, of course, have full basements, but they're saying, well, where's the lawnmower? Where's the bike going to go? It's nice to see them on plans that have been thought, again, very thoughtful application. I think that's the only questions I have now. Thank you. This is a very nice project.
Just a quick follow-up on Jim's. Can you put the laundry hookups on the plan? I can't find them.
They're not shown in the plans.
No. Can we have them shown? Thank you. Do you have anything?
I don't.
You're all set?
Yep.
Anybody else have any follow-up up here?
No, moment.
Anybody from the audience want to comment or ask any questions? Richard?
Evening, Richard Johnson, One Ambetts Avenue. I'm a landscape architect, and the question I have relates to site clearing and landscaping. It appears from the landscape plan as if the entire site will be clear-cut. But I haven't been able to read the grading plan closely enough to see why that is necessary. So, my question is, is it possible to leave existing vegetation on the southern property line as a buffer? The abutter's home is well beyond that property line, so there doesn't seem to be a need to have evergreen screening along that property line. And if less land can be cleared, it might also provide the kitties in the homes with some play area. So, perhaps a fence instead of the evergreen edge along that property line? Just a thought.
Anybody want to address that? Thank you, Richard. I still haven't found the landscape.
It's there.
It's in here?
Here's the landscaping plan that's in your package.
Oh, good.
And you can see it does use evergreens as a buffer along three sides of the parcel with fruit trees on each, each of the building lots and foundation plantings as well.
Is there any close-up of the houses and what's going around them?
Yes, there's a...
Where did you find the...
There's nothing beyond that shown. As I said, resilient roots will work with the homeowners in selecting plants, including trees with actually edible products.
I just want to note in response to the abutter's note on the southern boundary line, there is an existing stockade fence along a portion of that line. In addition to the evergreens, we're also extending the fence down to the southern property corner. So, there will be actually evergreens and fence.
Anybody else in the public want to comment? Quiet group tonight. Anybody have any other homework or any other questions?
Not at this moment.
Your HOA is done. You have the same one that starts each one in each project?
Yeah, we have a form that we've been using for a long time and one organization that's been managing homeowners associations. Because we found that, you know, before, what we learned is that having one homeowner being the chair of the HOA and collecting money on his neighbors is a very awkward thing. So, we turned pretty quickly to professionally managed HOAs.
And one other question I have is school bus. Now, are the kids going to go down this shared road? Have you talked to the school department yet or anything like that?
No, and I'm not sure. When we did Willett Way, I looked at the bus routes.
It's just a long driveway for little kids to be hiking up if they're walking from their house? Can you follow up with that? That'd be good. Just to figure out, because in a lot of our 40Bs, we do like a little shelter at the end of the street, and a lot of the people drive up and then hang around the shelter area till the bus comes, because, you know, you're kind of at a pretty bad intersection up there, you know, for kids to be running around. And anyway, just, I would take a look at it. Please.
I think Nick's got a question. I'm sure.
I just have a quick question. In regards to the family, these Falmouth local families, they get these four homes or they fall under their 40B requirement that only...
Fifty percent.
Two? You said two, right?
We have a local preference for two of the four houses. That's the maximum we can get.
Okay.
Is that the discretion of the executive office?
Two is great.
Supposed to be 70%, but you can't, it works out to 75 if you did the third unit.
I didn't know if it was maybe some different...
No, it's already been requested.
I do have one other question. Counsel, I'm sorry, one other follow-up question, and if I missed it in reading the purchase and sale agreement. In terms of access to these back properties coming over the driveway to the restore, is that going to be a recorded easement?
Yes.
And the follow-up then is, the HOA is going to be responsible for plowing. Is that literally just going to be the, I'm going to call it the semicircle within, in the driveways? Who is going to be responsible for the driveway coming? Is the tenant, the restore, or the owner of the property be responsible for? I just want to make sure that we don't get into a situation five years down the road where there's a disagreement, the restore is not there, and suddenly there's a road, 200-foot driveway that's not being plowed. I just want to make sure that the little, these little issues get worked out before we break ground.
We'll have to work it out.
We do maintain the draft.
And the easement agreement that we have will put the burden of maintaining the property on...
As long as it's addressed that something's in perpetuity, then I'm more than, I'm satisfied. So, thank you.
Anybody else? You all set up here?
I'm good.
Next meeting?
We have July, the next one will be July 24th. Is everyone available on that day? On your team?
Motion to continue to July 24th?
Second.
We have a motion. You guys are all set for tonight? Any further discussion before we continue? You're all set?
Any further questions?
Public's all set. We're good. So, we have a motion and a second to continue to July 24th. All those in favor? I oppose none. Great. Looks like a great project. Yeah.
So, at the next hearing, we would address these various concerns.
Yep, sounds good. And it's not, they don't seem too difficult. Great, thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, now, where's Mr. agenda as you roll? Hide him. We have a notebook tonight. All right, Ash, we doing any minutes? Wow. Full discussion?
Yeah, how about, when was the last time we got out before seven?
Not there yet.
Quiet. Don't talk. We will.
We've got to put four more cases on that.
Board updates. No updates, right?
If I may, Madam Chairman, no, so I do apologize to Madam Chairman of the Board. My sciatica acted up last week. I was barely able to walk, and after being given medication, I slept right through past six o'clock, and I forgot to call in to the board. So, I apologize to the board, but I was not going to be in a position to do any type of
Of any?
Of anything, quite frankly. So, why I was absent last week.
Madam Chair, hold on. Could we ask, excuse me? Excuse me, folks.
They don't even hear you. The whole town heard him.
People are good, right?
Can you go outside and talk?
We're still meeting.
Excuse me, folks.
We still have a meeting.
We're still meeting.
Okay, our next meeting is June 26th at 6:00 P.M. Mark?
Oh, motion to adjourn.
There we go.
Second half.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.